Good evening. Welcome to the June 27, 2023, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. When the clerk is ready, she'll please take the role.
Bulo?
Present.
Hayes?
Present.
Esslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Mughawar?
Here.
Seven present.
Councilmember Bulo will lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bulo. Next up, we have some introduction of staff this evening.
Yes, we do. I think what we'll do is we'll have Kelly go first, and she's already here. So Kelly could do the first introduction. You can do it from here. It's okay.
I would like to welcome Kay Qualley. Kay is our new Assistant Community Development Director in Community Development. So Kay is going to be helping with a lot of the day-to-day operations of our department of roughly twenty-five, you know, thirty staff members. So there's a lot going on. And she has some knowledge of Oshkosh as she used to live here. So Kay, do you want to tell a little bit about yourself?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm very pleased to be back in Oshkosh and serving the citizens of this great city. I've spent the last six years as the Winona County Planning and Environmental Services Director in Minnesota. But I wanted to assure you all that I did not pick up any football team bad habits while I was living there. So I'm excited to hear about many of the initiatives that the department and Kelly have initiated, and Mark, and the rest of the team. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, welcome.
And then Mr. Van Gomple has some introductions to make.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to just kind of give you a quick update with our department and our organization. We went through a reorganization at the beginning of this year. We worked with the city manager and human resources. Previously, the finance director had an assistant finance director, and we had a couple of managers that oversaw a couple of departments. When our assistant finance director left earlier this year, we went through a recruitment process and decided to go through a reorganization. So now, instead of having myself and one assistant finance director, we actually have two. What we've done is we took away one of our accounting managers and made that position assistant finance director. So I have an assistant finance director that helps out in the comptroller side of things or the accounting side of things, and I have assistant finance director that helps out with the treasury side of things. So the assistant finance director right now, that's kind of taking care of the accounting and controlling process. I'm pleased to announce that we've promoted Haley Palmquist, who was the accounting manager, to the assistant finance director. So Haley, if you want to just say a few comments?
Hi. I came to the city, I think it was in 2016, as the staff accountant. And then I was promoted to the financial accounting manager, and now I am here as the assistant finance director. And I'm happy to be here and to continue my work here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we're very fortunate that Haley was promoted to this position. She did an outstanding job in her previous role. But now, some of the treasury management things, we were able to bring on board into our organization the previous finance director from the town of Grand Shoot, and she's come into our organization as the assistant finance director. She's helping me all with the treasury management side of things. So Julie Comas is here as the assistant finance director. Julie?
Hello. Like Russ said, I came from the town of Grand Shoot. So prior to that, I was actually a governmental auditor. So I spent about six years auditing municipalities, then I worked for Grand Shoot just under ten years, and now I'm here. So welcome, and thank you for having me, and I hope to continue to grow.
Welcome. Well, welcome to all of you, and congratulations as well. Next on the agenda this evening, we have one public hearing. It is for Resolution 23-297, Approved Submittal of 2023 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Is this a three reading thing? Thank you. I don't see anybody registered to speak to it. Second reading, Resolution 23-297, Approved Submittal of 2023 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Third and final reading, Approved Submittal of 2023 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Consider the public hearing closed. I'll take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Is there any discussion on Resolution 23-297? Seeing none, if you'll take the role.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
Next, we have citizen statements. Looks like we have one registered this evening. Ms. Patty Diener? Good evening. Welcome.
I don't know if you all made it, but I went to the open house for the Your Boat Club by Perkins. They are keeping the name. It was a wonderful time. They had a good line of clothing. It's very nice what they've done. And I talked to the general manager there, and I said it'd be nice to open one in Fond du Lac. I said, "My brother had the marina down there. The channel's still there. His partner still has it." And I want Rick to know that I know who he is, that maybe he'll be thinking about opening it for Your Boat Club. They have forty businesses. One is up where my relatives live, right there. And came today to find out some information. I'm not familiar with all the permits in the city of Oshkosh. I have a friend that I've known for years, and they always used to take me to the date on the farmer for breakfast. We don't ever have one in this area. They have them out of gaming. They have them up in Marinette. They have them all up there, and it's a good time. You find out what farmers do every day. I know my farmers that I know personally do every day. And I want to thank the railroad, and I want to thank the city of Oshkosh for cutting the grass. I see one of the railroad guys came with a forklift and a cutter on to cut the grass. It was very nice. And... Oh, I'm going to thank whoever did it. I made it to attention, Public Works, I mean Engineering, for the hole that was on New York. They patched it, put a new sidewalk in. It was a hazard. And what else do I have to say? Hopefully, we can get the name of the company that I'm promoting is Pat's Maple and Honey. They sell all over, and they started with a farmer market, and they have grown so big that I'm trying to get them here, because Clifford was a pilot, and he came to EIA. And so we're finding out how much it costs for the permit to start selling their stuff here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. We move on to consent agenda. Seeing no one registered to speak, I'll take a motion and a second for consent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, when you're ready, please take the role.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
On to new ordinances. First two, we anticipate no action on. Ordinance 23-332, Approved Text Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Related to Projecting Signs. Plan Commission Recommends Approval. And Ordinance 23-333, Amend Sections 13-10 and 7-13, and Create Section 7-13.1 of the City Municipal Code Pertaining to Building Plan Submissions and Reviews, and to Authorize Delegation of Commercial Plan Reviews to Third-Party Contractors. Moving on, we have Ordinance 23-334. Amend various sections of Chapter 2 of the City Municipal Code pertaining to the Oshkosh Public Museum, Public Arts, and Landmarks Commission to create a Consolidated Museum, Arts, and Culture Board, and assign the Director of the Public Museum as the Secretary for the Landmarks Commission. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. I have no one registered to speak on this. If there's a motion and a second to waive the rules and adopt on first reading?
Move to waive the rules.
Second that. Any discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none, if you'll take the role on waiving.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
At Ordinance 23-334, amend various sections of Chapter 2 of the City Municipal Code pertaining to the Oshkosh Public Museum, Public Arts, and Landmarks Commission to create a Consolidated Museum, Arts, and Culture Board, and assign the Director of the Public Museum as the Secretary for the Landmarks Commission. I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Actually, the city attorney does want to let us know about one typo they've found and that they're going to correct.
Yeah. As we were going through, right before the meeting, we found one spot where we missed correcting the reference to the Public Arts Advisory Board. We'll change that to the name of the new board. If you catch it as you're going through, we will correct that and get a corrected copy to the clerk's office to post.
Thank you. Any discussion on 23-334? Seeing none, if you'll take the role.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
We're on to 23-335. Amend Sections 2-41A, 2-42A, 2-44A, and 2-51A of the City Municipal Code to reduce the size of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, Sustainability Advisory Board, Long Range Finance Committee, and Advisory Park Board. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. I have no one registered to speak. If there's a motion and a second to waive the rules and adopt on first reading?
Move to waive the rules at this time.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll take the role on waiving the rules.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
Back to Ordinance 23-335. Amend Section 241A, 242A, 244A, and 251A of the City Municipal Code to reduce the size of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, Sustainability Advisory Board, Long Range Finance Committee, and Advisory Park Board. I'll take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. I have one, I have a comment on this one. I want to thank staff for their work on this. Well, first, going back to even thanking Deputy Mayor Erickson and former councilmember Miller for their efforts on this topic and this project, and then staff for going through the exercise and adjusting all these. Last meeting, we had some discussion on board size. And if some boards should be bigger than others, or if we should, you know, put them all at the same size. We left last meeting with sustainability being an outlier in terms of the ones we're adjusting. DEI, long-range finance, and parks, we moved basically down to five full members and two alternates. And this was brought to us with sustainability at seven full members and two alternates. I'm just, coming out of last meeting, I don't think there was a single articulation of why. We did have someone, the board chair, who didn't like the idea. I appreciate that. We're not always going to agree on everything, right? That's our society, and that's the way it works in government, too. But no one articulated a specific reason as to why that one needed to be special compared to the others we're adjusting. I'm not a fan of it. I think I'd like to see sustainability at five instead. So that would be in line with DEI, long-range finance, and Advisory Parks Board. Again, it wasn't always about quorum issues for all of them. It was about creating a consistency amongst our boards and commissions. We had some dedicated people on Long Range Finance, Parks Board, that I would imagine wouldn't mind continuing serving as well. And that was really the impetus, it seemed like, to keep SAB at seven, was that there were some people who would like to continue serving. So it looks like Councilmember Bulo does have a comment. I'll hold off on making a motion to amend, since I'll let you guys comment first, but then afterwards, expect that, I guess, from me as a motion to amend. Mr. Bulo first, and then followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to comment back because I thought one of the reasons why I supported that size differential for the SAB board is because there was a substantial why, and the why that was laid out was the diverse knowledge base that was represented in the members that were there. That may change in years. I don't know, but right now, they have members that are bringing a really specialized set of diverse viewpoints and knowledge to that board, and I did not want to see that lost just to say that we made them all the same. So as to why, I thought that was a very powerful reason, and that's why I was supporting that change.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I think my reason is kind of similar, but the reason that I, I don't know if we voted, gave direction, I should say, to increase that one was I do think the argument that the chairperson laid out, that sustainability is a, I think has a wider breadth of disciplines that you need to implement. Not to say that our other boards and commissions aren't very knowledgeable, but I think their focus is a little bit more refined. To me, sustainability is all the way out there, right? It covers finance, it covers planning, it covers even, in some cases, historic preservation. So I think that was the why for me.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I agree with what's been said about kind of the unique circumstances for that particular board. A question for staff, and I'm sorry for not asking this sooner, but thinking about in the future, if a board or commission, say, you know, an emerging issue came up, or they had a need to either increase or decrease the size of their board because of a, you know, a new plan that they're working on or something, have we thought through what the process would be? Could a board request to ask for an increase in size or decrease?
I would say conceivably. That can happen anytime. So a few months down the road, it may happen that early because of other issues. The way the resolution that was adopted by the council read was that we will revisit this in five years regardless, but that doesn't mean it can't be earlier, and that would be up to the discretion of council.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments? Well, I suspect I know where it's going to go, but I'm going to move to amend 23-335, reducing Sustainability Advisory Board down to, it would be four full citizen members, one council rep, and two alternates.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last, I don't know if it was the last meeting, but when we were talking about this, I did say that we should have some type of consistency with the boards and commissions. I also did not hear any strong arguments to have it any different than the other boards and commissions that we have. So I will go along with the mayor's suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'm hoping the deputy American answered a question, the report you and former councilman Miller put together. And I think you mentioned this at the previous meeting. I know you guys recommended, or you both recommended consistency, but you also had a line in there about flexibility. Can you just reiterate what that rationale, sorry to put you on this spot?
No, that's okay.
Just want to make sure I'm being consistent.
Yeah, so we did, we included a line in the report about that the council could determine that there are special circumstances involving the interest in or the purpose of a board or commission, and so we could deviate from that, that standard size. So I think we meant that to allow for some flexibility if, you know, a board or commission was working on a plan or something that required a wider range of members.
Okay. So I guess, just for my own thinking, what I'm hearing here is that if we did allow seven, we're not being inconsistent with the recommendations. The disagreement here is about, or the debate here is about whether or not there is adequate rationale to do it consistent with the recommendations. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Bulo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think, and I don't always think about things this way, but sometimes I think about, you know, the cost benefit of making a decision just in purely black and white. And the cost of allowing a couple more volunteers to serve on an advisory board is next to nothing, whereas the benefit to chopping it is consistency. Now, I'm not saying consistency has no benefit, but that's the cost and the benefit. The cost of potentially losing those members and that expertise off of that board is something. It's intangible, so it can't really be weighed. But again, the benefit of cutting it is just consistency. So I respect, obviously, your motion, but I think it's obvious that I disagree with it.
No problem at all. If there's no other comments, if the clerk will take the role on the motion to amend SAB down to five full and two alternates.
Bulo?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Ford?
No.
Stevenson?
No.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Lost five-two.
All right. And so we're back to the full ordinance, 23-335. Any additional comments? Councilmember Hayes?
Just going back to our last meeting, there was also a discussion that the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has a council member that is non-voting. And what was suggested or recommended be included in this ordinance is that the council member for DEI would be a voting member, and so that's missing within the ordinance.
Yes.
I believe so.
The way we worded it is that, and I'm giving Lynn time to read it to double check. It says, "Shall consist of five members, one of whom shall be a council member." Any reference to non-voting has been removed.
Yes.
It used to say non-voting. Now it specifically excludes that, so by definition, it is a voting member.
And I'll just respond to that as an attorney, that that does not clarify. But it does now that it's on the record. I'm just saying typically in writing those, there would be clarification, especially when you move from just removing a word. It creates confusion, but that's all. I get your point.
If there's no other discussion, you'll take the role on 23-335.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
On to new resolutions. 23-336, Approved Specific Implementation Plan Amendment for signage at Boys and Girls Club, 515 East Parkway Avenue. Plan Commission Recommends Denial.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the topic? Don't everyone be the first. There we go. Councilmember Bulo will first.
Mayor, just a point of order. Are we taking public comment at all on this?
We are. She didn't register, so I didn't know if she wanted to. Well, usually, but if you'd like to speak, you can come on up before we get to our action. You're absolutely entitled to come up as the applicant.
Excuse me. Could I have your name and address, please?
Tracy Ogden, 8021 Cavendish Road, Nina.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. And I want to start by saying that, you know, through this project, which is an eighteen million dollar build for the Boys and Girls Club, I am very grateful to the city and to all of you for everything that you have allowed us to do so far. The signage thing is tough for us because we had to go to not only, you know, private, you know, donors, but we also had to go to corporations to say, "Can you help us build this Boys and Girls Club?" And four of them, you know, were looking for logos on these buildings. So that's where the discussion's coming up, is can we come to some sort of resolution or compromise or something? And I will tell you, the four businesses that, you know, we're looking for logos are longstanding, you know, the biggest employers in town, and their biggest thing was, we want our employees to know that we're supporting our Boys and Girls Club. Like when they, you know, when they drive down, you know, Parkway or Broad or, you know, or Monroe, and they see that logo, they're, you know, really proud of the fact that their employees will all see that. So I'm wondering if there's a compromise here.
Stay tuned.
Yep, if you want to stay tuned. Yes. We still had a motion and a second on the floor, and Mr. Bulo was going to go first, I believe, right?
I was, and now I'm looking at something in the documents. So if somebody else wants to go, I can jump in later.
Councilmember Esslinger, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I think you have received, in fact, we had a memo here from Lynn Lawrenson regarding this issue. You did have the materials from the Plan Commission, the minutes there, the discussion that we had. In the memo, just so you know, in the memo that we received from Ms. Lawrenson, there may be some legal issues that the council would have to discuss, to see if we can do this, or if we do this, what precedent does it set? And if you allow that, then, you know, is the train going to start running, essentially? So the suggestion was made by Ms. Lawrenson, our attorney, that this be laid over until we can have an executive session where the council would meet with our legal staff to discuss this, you know, can we do it? Can't we do it? If we want to do it, how can we do it, a compromise like you were talking about? So I certainly want to hear some more discussion, but that's something that I think at this time would be appropriate to listen to our legal staff, and just, you know, to make sure that we're doing it correctly, and we don't want to get ourselves, or you and anyone else in trouble.
Councilmember Bulo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to find the exact quote, but I think you know this. I'm very close to nonprofits and nonprofit operations, and I fully understand the need to thank and recognize donors. But one quote really stood out here in the minutes where it was, were the sponsorships, were there conditions based on that when it came to the signage? And I believe that you said there were no conditions at the time of the donations, correct? Okay. So my only big point is there are ways to thank them that don't include the signage outside of the wall. And I definitely understand being, you know, generous back to the donors and thankful for that. But I just wanted, that really jumped out to me, that it wasn't a portion of the, it wasn't the condition of the donation.
I wouldn't have promised it when going to the donors. I would never have promised it without knowing that we can do it. But I will also say that there isn't another nonprofit in this community that's put forth eighteen million dollars into their neighborhood, you know, and to serve our kids and to serve our families, you know, with the addition of the club and the community center that we're building. So I get that this can set a precedence, but I don't think there's a lot of other people out there that are going to take on what we did. I mean, we raised sixteen million dollars out of the eighteen so far. I mean, we're grateful for the city's help on this, but that's a lot, you know, it's a huge project. It really is. So, I mean, we're just trying to thread that needle very carefully on what this looks like to finish it.
Councilmember Ford first, followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I think we have a case here where the off-code premise language, off-code premise signage language in our code. It's just off-premise signage. I'm being very articulate here, but I think it lacks the, it lacks the nuance to deal with a situation like this. A situation that I think is going to come up more and more as we're more and more dependent on these types of community collaborations to provide essential services to our residents. And to me, this was always from the start, I say this as someone with a nonprofit background. We would occasionally do things where we were selling ads to people explicitly for advertising, but we'd also do things just to honor the people that were donating to our organization. And that's a difference, I think, in practice. It may not be a difference in legal precedent, which I think is the problem here. So, I mean, I would really like us to try to find a way forward. I want this to happen. But I also want to make sure we don't make a decision that puts ourselves in legal peril. So I'm hoping that we can defer this, so that we can try to find a path forward that sets a narrow precedent for a situation just like this. Not an exception for a single organization, but understanding that this is a specific type of situation that's likely to come up again. And I'm hopeful that we can get to that, we can get to that point. But I do think it's prudent for us to be able to wait and figure that out so that we don't do something that either A) puts us in legal peril or B) prevents something really good from happening in the community.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah. This one is a hard one for me, too, because I do really want to work with you guys, but I also know signs are very, very tricky, and they're very heavily regulated by the state and the feds at that point. So I would also be in favor of maybe deferring it and seeing if we can come up with some solutions. If there's a way we can, even if we have to change ordinance in some way, that, yeah, I know that might be a little tricky, too. But I think we need to talk further about it. There's not a way we could just approve it today. So those would be my comments. I know this sign code, like I said, I know this sign code, like I said, is a little tricky with First Amendment rights and things of that nature, so.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Ma'am, I don't know what timeline you're on for putting up signs. Lynn, I don't know when we can have an executive session to try to figure this out and bring it back. Do you have a timeline that you have to get going on this, or do you have?
I'm okay. The, you know, the majority of the bigger sign, I have one portion of it done that would, yes, have a sign, but it can wait. I'd rather we take our time and do it right.
All right. Mayor, I don't see anyone else on the board, so I guess I'm going to.
Hold up, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay.
Because I just want to make a brief comment or two, and then I'll bring it right back to you. I got to remember, it's about, a former council member who I greatly respect always told me it was about the development, not the developer. So, and this is a very similar case of, I can't just say I want to do this because it's the Boys and Girls Club, even though I absolutely believe that, I want to, you know, I'm a fan of everything that the club does and the, this construction project and honoring those who've given a ton to help the children in the community. But it's about the development and trying to make sure it's, it's right, as I think Councilmember Ford said, you know, supportive, but got to make sure it's legal, it's acceptable. I have a question or two for city staff, if you don't mind, I apologize, it only hit me a little bit ago on this topic. If you could, I guess a little clarity, and it sounds like we may end up possibly laying this thing over. In terms of signage, because yes, it is very tricky, Supreme Court case, it's an all-or-nothing type of scenario, it really seems like, a lot of signs. Is there a difference in terms of how it applies to a commercial establishment versus an institutional establishment, or even an institutional versus an institutional establishment? Like, is there nuances?
Uh-uh. I'll add the code.
There's a reason I'm asking, so.
Is your question about our code, or is your question about some of our interpretation?
Interpretation, or even within our code, too. The reason I'm going to ask, and I guess I'll just, I won't bury the lead, we have other institutional properties in town that have off-premise signage.
Yeah.
And it's okay.
Yep.
You go by a football field in town, right on the scoreboard, we have other companies' logos on that scoreboard. We go to a baseball field, and the outfield has signage attached to a chain link fence. To me, that isn't any different. So I guess where's the nuance in how is that acceptable compared to how is this unacceptable?
Yeah, so interpretation both here in Oshkosh and broadly, when it comes to that question, internally facing signage, so a ballpark facing internal, outfield facing into the development, scoreboard facing into the field, has not met the definition of signage as regulated through municipal code for signage. And that has been the difference, if it is internal, versus facing external to promote something.
And logo versus text only. For example, you know, I hate to say anything and throw anybody in the bus, we have J.J. Keller Field at Titan Stadium.
Yep.
So it's the text only versus logo.
Correct.
And then one more step further, in terms of, not necessarily our arena, but we have sports stadiums in this state. I can look up images of Lambeau, I can look up images of American Family, or whatever we're calling it today. And not only does it say, you know, the Verizon Gate, it's got the Verizon logo next to it. So the nuances of that is outward facing, and it's, you know, it's an institutional property, but it's outward facing now, and it's off-premise signage.
Yep. So there has been kind of larger precedent set of those being included in stadium, arena type settings. It is precedent, it is definitely off-premise signage, I mean, there's, don't hit the mic. There's no question about, those are off-premise advertising that have taken place on a lot of stadiums and avenues. It's been kind of precedent set through those type of developments.
Okay.
Or good or bad, but that precedent has been established.
And close to home, the verb.
Our arena has it.
Over at the arena, so it's not just, you don't have to go all the way up to Lambeau, we have it here already.
One last question, I glanced over it, but I guess I wouldn't mind some clarity on it. Text versus logo. So a fair amount of the images we're seeing from the Boys and Girls Club plan are text only, there's a few that include a logo. Are we okay with straight text only? You know, just straight up, straight text only? Is that staff's opinion?
Yeah, looking in our ordinance, the definitions of off-premise advertising, signage, staff's interpretation is text only, would not be off-premise advertising and would be allowed under our current code.
Appreciate the, the direct answer.
Can I add one, make two?
Yeah, go right ahead.
The other point I want to make, too, about our signage, is in terms of the arena, that was sold as a sponsorship for a certain amount of time. Our logos are for good. So, you know, we're keeping the Oshkosh Bagosh, you know, middle school center, we're keeping the Radford Center, these will stay going forward. You know, it's not for a limited amount of time.
I appreciate that. That is a nuance that should be noted, thank you. Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Ms. Esslinger.
So I think this is something maybe you were alluding to, Mayor, but super in support of the Boys and Girls Club, but I don't think this is an issue just for you. So I would like to maybe take this up as a larger issue on what we're calling like donations, or if it's specific institutional uses, or not just specific to the Boys and Girls Club in general. If there's a larger zoning ordinance we can maybe kind of go over, I would prefer that type of conversation, because it's going to keep coming up, and we have to have an answer for it, even if the answer turns out to be no. But we have to, I think, put our due diligence into this, so.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Lawrenson, defer to you. I know in your memo, you basically, in lack of a better term.
It wasn't an email. I don't want people to think it was more than it was.
I'm talking about this one here.
It was a question that came late yesterday, and it was an email this morning.
Yeah, in the memo, I think you basically said we have to be a little careful, I don't know if we've walked down the line here on some of the things that we've talked about, the buildings that they're already on, things that we would discuss in an executive session. I have like three pages of suggestions and ideas and examples that if we're going to talk about that, I would like to talk about them in public. I'm that type person, when I just say it in public, I don't like talking about it in private. But is it your opinion that I would, it would be best if I left those ideas, suggestions, and other examples at this point in time to an executive session?
Not knowing what they are, probably. I mean, you can send me something, and we can look at it and see if it is something to be discussed in the closed session, or if it can wait and be discussed in the public session.
Well, this.
The suggestion of if you need a closed session was just to get, because, again, it was an email this morning with, if you want further explanation of the concerns that I raised, that would be the purpose for a closed session.
Right. And so I swear, legal stuff is a parallel universe that I don't want to go into, so I guess I'm just going to, like I said, I've got a lot of different ideas, suggestions, and, you know, maybe this, maybe that type of thing, so I guess for, as of right now, I'll just leave it where it is, and hopefully we can have that executive session and smash something out.
City manager Roloff, if we lay this over, are we able to fit in a closed session at the next regularly scheduled council meeting?
I think we can. I think we're going to have a fairly light agenda anyway because of the, because of the July Fourth holiday and everything, so we probably have sufficient time that we'll have.
Staff would have.
I'd certainly leave it to your discretion, you know, I don't expect a very long meeting, so this wouldn't be an action item, Tracy, just full disclosure, it'd be more, we talk about, do you want to do it at the end of the meeting? Because I don't know if, depending on how things evolve, I don't know forty-five minutes will do justice to it. It might, but I, but if it's, do you want to do it at the end, just so that, because I think you'll be under an hour on the regular session.
Will staff?
So that way then we've got an open-ended ability. Full disclosure, Ms. Lawrenson won't be here, but our deputy attorney, Mr. Prasko, is very well-versed in this issue. So I, you'll get good legal counsel.
Will staff have enough time? I'm just being honest with the holiday coming up, will staff have enough time to prepare for a closed session between now and then?
It's just an opportunity, yes. Short answer, yes.
Thank you, perfect.
I mean, Lynn, I should, Dave's ready.
Okay. If there, is there a motion to lay over? How do we want to word this? We want to.
I think you would want to lay it over at least two meetings.
Lay it over.
To give you the opportunity to talk and then decide.
What's the date on that one?
The twenty-fifth.
Is there a motion to lay over this Resolution twenty-three, three thirty-six to the July twenty-fifth council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? It's all yours.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think it's a good idea, obviously, to lay it over. I hope that this particular applicant isn't discouraged, and I know you're caught up with something a little larger than your own specific project. And then, thank you, city staff, city attorney Lawrenson, I was the one bothering her with emails late in the game, so I apologize for not giving you enough time. This was a bigger issue than I thought it was, but I appreciate the willingness to.
I just didn't want people to think I wrote some kind of brief to you all.
Oh, gosh, yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I guess the general public, too. I know that when we do things like deferring, it can be a situation where it looks like we're just kicking the can, or we're not making a decision, but I think this is incredibly prudent, it's ensuring that we don't make a decision that either A hurts members of our community, or B puts the city in legal peril. So this is one of those situations where it makes a heck of a lot of sense for us to keep doing our homework.
Councilmember Hayes, followed by Councilmember Bulo.
I agree that it's necessary to lay it over. I would hope that there is the ability to come to a compromise. For me personally, I think I needed just more information. I didn't have enough time to do what I wanted to do, to gather more information, to vote either way. But I also want to point out that when we say, like, legal issues, or we talk about precedents, sometimes you set a precedent, but it has not yet been challenged. And so I know we've been receiving some communications through members of the community who point out circumstances in which, you know, signage has been approved for different institutions, businesses, or organizations. However, when you're talking about the legal realm of things, sometimes it's fine until it's not. And so while that has been the case, or has been established that, you know, an organization has certain signage that one other one doesn't, sometimes it just hasn't been attacked yet. And so I think that coming from the city and their legal team, it's just making us aware that doesn't, just because it's happening somewhere else, doesn't mean that it's okay. It could very well just not have been challenged yet to raise an issue. So I just want to make sure that that's understood, that legally it's not coming in saying, no, it was just, be aware of the way it works, the way the law can work, and go through those channels, and how it could be attacked and challenged, and you find yourself in a very long, drawn-out legal battle, and creates financial concerns as well. So just because it's happening doesn't mean that it's been proven to be okay, it just hasn't been challenged.
Councilmember Bulo.
Thank you. Agree with what's being said here, I really do want to find a good way to recognize everybody here, just so that we're clear on the homework, though, moving forward, and that we're looking at moving forward a couple, a month here. Are we going to be taking up this issue, or are we going to be taking up Councilmember Stevenson's issue? Do we look at the entire policy? Because that seems like a whole different thing that, for us to be ready for in a short time.
I would say the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
We're going to have, you know, it could be this, or it could be that, I mean, so we have to.
Because I would at least want to be able to have an answer back to the Boys and Girls Club, but yes, if we can tackle the whole thing, that's great.
But it really goes to Councilmember Hayes' point, you don't know what you have until you have it, and those are some of the nuances. It's not that we would potentially face a lawsuit from the Boys and Girls Club, that's probably the most unlikely. It's everybody else, and they'll use this as well as the ones that I think Councilmember Hayes is referring to, and we've talked about a couple of them. We got to make sure that we're okay. In the last ten years, ever since the Gilbert, Arizona case, cities have been under intense scrutiny on their signage. And the, the type of business, even a wonderful nonprofit like the Boys and Girls Club, because if this was, if this was about the Boys and Girls Club, this vote would have been handled about a half hour ago. This is more about the implications of our decisions, and that's why we need to talk to council about it, because it's implications down the road that you may never have to as this council deal with, but if you give that burden to a future council, somebody's going to say, who came up with this idea? And the answer will be, well, these seven back in 2023. So you do want to step carefully.
We'll blame, don't worry, we'll blame.
It's okay. I appreciate the discussion. I mean, I, just like I tell my kids at the club, I would rather they ask a million questions, you know, rather than just saying no. So I very much appreciate the time and the conversation, and hopefully, yes, it does answer the bigger question for people down the road, so.
I appreciate your, your willingness and your honesty in terms of the impact it has that we do have a little time here, so.
Absolutely.
And thank you for coming to us with time, so we don't have to try to decide.
If there's nothing else, the clerk will take the role on laying over till, what was it?
Twenty-fifth.
There we go, July the twenty-fifth.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried for layover.
Resolution twenty-three dash three three seven, update designation of authorized individuals for city financial matters and investment transfers, matters and investment transfers. Sorry for that.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion? Would you like to speak, or? I assume I know, I assume I know why, we've got some changes in staff, and that probably correlates to, you know, we should update some things.
Yes, this first one is just to update personnel names, but I'm here if you have any questions.
Seeing none, if you'll take the role.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
On to twenty-three dash three three eight, approve revised investment policy.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. If either one would, wouldn't mind maybe just giving a brief update as to what we're doing?
This started out the same exact way, trying to change the personnel names when we met with others' investment partners. We were advised that there was some language that they would recommend updating, so we decided to bring them together at the same time. I also looked at the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, they have best practices, and they actually had an example investment policy that they recommend. So I tweaked a couple words here and there based off of the GFOA best practices, but for the most part, there's no substantial changes, other than the name changes, so, but here for questions for that as well.
Seeing none, if you'll take the role.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
I just want to say, um, to, to the staff, um, and the finance office, continuously impressed with the proactive nature, getting our policies in line and being willing to dig into things, even if that wasn't your original, kind of, original intent. It's made a big difference and will make a really big difference if you ever do retire, or at least you can.
Just, just a quick follow-up to that comment. For those that were participating with Long Range Finance, we've started a pretty proactive review on all of our policies. My, my goal is to have like a procedure or policy manual. We continue to look at policies that have been in place for a number of years or new ones. And, and actually our cash handling, while we've had some internal practices in the past, this is a totally new policy for us. So, um, we're recommending that you consider that. Long Range Finance is, is recommending approval, so, um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, thanks for the comment and we really appreciate that.
If there's no other comments, please take the role on 23-339.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried, seven?
Next up, Resolution 23-340, authorize an inter-fund loan from the General Fund to tax increment District 25 and approve repayment terms for the inter-fund loan.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the role.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried, seven?
Resolution 23-341, approve alcohol beverage license Pioneer Tiki Bar, 1,000 Pioneer Drive. Take a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the role.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried, seven?
Resolution 23-342, approve alcohol beverage license, The Good Yolk Brunch Cafe, 1,009 West 9th.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? I will just ask a brief question. It won't be a discussion on the applicant itself, but after these two approvals, where do we stand?
At least three.
Thank you. All right, if you'll take the role on 23-342.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried, seven?
Well, that concludes the action items for this evening. Now we're on to council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. Uh, we have nothing under the future agenda items, so I guess we move on to, unless council has any that they would like to add. I see nobody jumping. Future workshops tomorrow evening, 5:00 PM, Room 40, is that 406 or 404 right over there? CIP Budget Workshop with Finance. Looks like, and also in our red folders this evening should have gotten, I think, some financial information on what we're going to talk about tomorrow, right?
The CIP stuff.
Yep.
The special assessment stuff we're, we'll have for you tomorrow night.
Perfect. July 25th, future workshop, city managers mid-year review. That will be a, actually a, a closed session after council. So I guess anticipate both July meetings that we will have closed sessions afterwards.
Deputy Mayor Erickson, now we'll be getting in touch. I'll, uh, you'd ask for the memo, probably have it next week for the council for the quarter report update.
Sounds good. Moving on to council member announcements and statements. I know we have, uh, this is your spot to bring us any information from the boards and commissions. There is, we have one, um, actual agenda item, that'd be, uh, some comments on the shared revenue bill from Councilmember Ford. It's all yours.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to commend, uh, City Manager Roloff for his leadership on the shared revenue bill. So I know we've talked a lot about this over the years. 2004, shared revenue's been frozen and it was cut before then. So I think as you put it, we, we basically got ourselves back to 1994, which is a great year. But the bottom line is having that, that shared revenue cut and, and being frozen has put more pressure on the property tax and fees to fund our basic services and it just wasn't sustainable. So the bill that did pass is not perfect, but it's a 20% increase in shared revenue to the city of Oshkosh. It also indexes annual growth to shared revenue to increases into the state sales tax revenue. And that's huge for Oshkosh because basically it means when the state economy's doing well, we're going to have a predictable increase in our funding. It's going to help the budget planning process too. But really the point here is, you can read more about the bill through local library. But the point here is that two years ago, we set a goal and I believe Deputy Mayor and, uh, Erickson and Mayor Mughawar were on the, the council at the time. Uh, for the city manager to be an advocate and use a lot of your, your earned goodwill over your career here in Wisconsin, uh, to advocate for improving, uh, the shared revenue situation. And Mark was certainly instrumental in building that coalition that included the Counties Association, the Towns Association, the League of Municipalities, and bringing them all together. And more impressively, behind the scenes, keeping them all together. I mean, I really honestly believe it's fair to say that if they weren't unified, uh, and if voices like yours were not there to keep that group unified, there's no way this remarkable bill, um, would have gotten done, something that people have been trying to do for 20 years. So that's a long way of saying, I don't think it was our goal that did it, but hopefully it helped a little bit. Uh, it was definitely your efforts. So, so well done, Mark. I think we, uh, we owe you and the state owes you for that work.
And I want to thank my vehicle that put a lot of miles on to get this done. We, a lot of trips down to Wisconsin Dells for some of the meetings that we had with the joint committees. And then, uh, sometimes luck has something to do with it, being down in Madison the night before a bill. And, and so we were all, all the mayors and city managers in the state were there to have a meeting and they just happened to have a hearing the next day. Guess what we did that day? So those types of things. And when you saw a unified front for the first time in this, I think it made a big difference. So I appreciate the comments.
No, agreed. And it's so easy for us to say, why don't we just lobby the state for something? But when you see what that actually entails, it's an incredible amount of work and sacrifice. And you did it, Mark, so it's appreciated.
Thank you. Just to piggyback a little bit, um, also want to say thank you to Mark for all the efforts on this. When we met a couple of years ago, uh, I jokingly said, you know, before Mark retires, I want to burn up all the goodwill that he has accumulated over his 30 to 30-plus years of service in this state. Because once he leaves, it means nothing. It's gone. And being, um, what, you know, among the top 10 largest communities in the state, he is the only nonpartisan chief executive of those. We've got Republicans, we've got Democrats, and over the last several years, decades, you know, not a whole lot gets done in Madison that, that substantially impacts municipalities. Positively, I should use that word. This is huge. This is monumental. Bipartisan with the governor, uh, Republican leadership down, down in Madison, but it started at home. City of Oshkosh, townships, counties, um, trying to keep them all together in the same room. You know, herding cats is probably the, the right terminology. But just a, a huge amount of thank you to, uh, City Manager Roloff. For those at home that, that haven't listened or haven't heard, it's almost $2 million more that the city of Oshkosh will receive annually going forward. And it's, you know, it's, it's attached to, to future revenue growth with our sales tax. And not just for us, the county also, you know, $2 million there and every municipality around us. So, um, again, thank you for the efforts. Well done. You, you've earned, uh, you've earned some praise from us and, and I'm, I'm so thankful for all the effort on this one. So well done.
Well, I won't have to write much in that part of the quarterly report.
I was going to say he got this done right before the review for a reason.
I think I'm just going to write done.
Yeah, you can just throw a check mark on that one, so. If there is, uh, is there any other, uh, council member, um, announcements or statements? Councilmember Hayes?
I feel like we were supposed to prepare statements for our...
No, no, no.
I feel it, it's okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to be like, same, same. We speak when necessary, but same.
Councilmember, um, Bulow and then Councilmember Esslinger.
I just wanted to say I like the, the city manager's tie.
Yeah, we all feel like we have to throw in something at this point.
Councilmember Esslinger.
I think my kids will appreciate that comment, but it's been a while.
Yep, two things. Uh, number one is, um, I also want to thank, um, Representative Schra and the other people that represent us and the other municipalities who actually voted on bringing that money back to Oshkosh and the other communities. And, uh, you know, the fact of the matter is the other communities deserve their money too. So Mark, you know, certainly had his hand in there and we owe him a, a gratitude for that. But, you know, the people that, um, that did a lot of the work in voting for it and going back and forth with Democrats and Republicans and getting that figured out. He went to about herding cats. That's...
Catch it scratch.
Catch it scratch. And the second thing I want to say is I love how the city clerk says Mughawar. I just, how she says it, it's just fantastic. So I'm sure, I'm sure, Matt, you've had Mughawar enunciated about a million different times. I just, I just love that one. That's great. That's it, thank you.
Before we move on, either Mark or Finance, I'm sorry to do this. One part of this bill that was, that's not talked about, um, the personal property tax repeal. You want to take 30 seconds and tell them how big of a deal that is for small business everywhere in the state of Wisconsin, as well as how much help it is to our, our city finance staff in terms of trying to administer that?
Russ walked halfway up. I gotta let him finish up and do the walk.
Once he starts, you know.
Once he starts, we want him to say so. It takes me a while to get up and get over here. The staff work, really a lot of that work is done in community development in the assessor's office. And there's a lot of work, uh, chasing basically a self-reporting form. But I, because I'm the bearer of bad news, I go up to the city manager and I said, hey, do you know what this is going to do to our, we always measure our debt to the state ratio of the allowable debt that you can incur. And I said, you know, this is going to reduce our equalized value. He goes, oh, thanks a lot, Russi. Put a damper my weekend. And I go, well, I'm just telling you, we have to look at that. So, um, we're going to have a reduction in our equalized value. So, uh, the valuation when it comes to determining taxes, you're going to have a, a lower denominator. So the rate, you know, might be adjusted. But the good news is it's, it's a small fraction. I mean, um, our, what did we figure it was less than 10? It was like 5? It's 4%. Our, our personal property is about 4%. So it'll go down 4. But I, I try to put sunshine back into his clouds. And part of what I said was, well, our equalized value overall is going to go up about 10%. So we might net a 6% increase this year, so. And, and we can show you that tomorrow night when we do our discussion with, uh, our capital improvement plan. Because, uh, for the council members that have been around, um, what we do is we have this spreadsheet. I gave you a printed copy, but we usually call it up on the screen and we walk through different scenarios. And, and one of the slides that I incorporated in my, uh, presentation tomorrow night actually shows the increase of our equalized value, uh, over the last 10, 15 years. Um, and we had a period in time where the city of Oshkosh actually was losing equalized value instead of gaining. We had a 10% the previous year. On average, it's been about, if you go back and average it out, it's more like 4 or 5%. The number we've used conservatively in our calculations is a 2.69 when we've worked with our financial advisors. That is what we're projecting going forward for our growth and our equalized value. So there's still inflationary and real estate, uh, conditions. Uh, the real estate market's still going fairly strong even with the higher interest rates. And we could talk some more about that tomorrow night, but, uh, yeah, it, it's going to have, impact our equalized value. No doubt about it. But I will say on the mayor's behalf, because that wasn't the answer he was looking for.
That was an answer to a question, it wasn't the question, but...
But the impact on businesses, and, and quite honestly, it's also going to be a great impact on staff. And I think where the, where the two come together is that staff is often, uh, chasing honest people. You know, you didn't fill out this form or that form. There are people who, who are very uncooperative. And that's not, you know, we were chasing honest people. So it was really kind of a futile effort. And the more restrictions that were placed on personal property, it was literally trying to find a needle in a haystack, which was kind of a wasted effort. All the reporting that small businesses have to do is, is just a pain because they're valuing some pretty small stuff in the, in the context of their business. So this is going to be a great relief to businesses that won't have to do that anymore.